Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting and bloodletting activity in Barangay Embargo and Pantaon on 6/7 and 10 September 2023 by the Community of Hope Special Education Center Incorporated in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservation, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Madam Chair, this is a resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting and bloodletting operation on 28th of August to 9th September 2023 by the Community of Hope Special Education Center Incorporated in Osami City. More for its approval on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any remarks, comment, hearing none, motion approved?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approvement decision number four, a resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting and bloodletting activity in Barangay Embargo and Pantaon on 6/7 and 10 September 2023 by Philippine Red Cross Osami City in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
Madam Chair, this is a resolution approving the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Due to its urgency and public interest, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, a resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting and bloodletting activity in Barangay Embargo and Pantaon on 7 and 10 September 2023 by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's chapter in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
Madam Chair, this is a resolution approving the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency and public interest, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, a resolution approving the conduct of the bloodletting and bloodletting activity in Barangay Embargo and Pantaon on 7 and 10 September 2023 by the Philippine Red Cross Osami's chapter in Osami City for final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules, being presented by the honorable Lee as this resolution. Is there any comment, remark, hearing none, motion approved, the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The next approvation session is a resolution approving the conduct of the activities in celebration of the SSS 66th anniversary on September 1, 2023 by Social Security System Osami Branch in Osami City. I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Health and Salvation and the Board of Captain Lynn to endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Lee.
Honorable Lee, the Secretary is now recommended here for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair and our Majority Floor Leader. I would like to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the activities in celebration of the SSS 66th anniversary on September 1, 2023 by the Social Security System Osami's branch in Osami City for first reading, Madam Chair, with reservation.
More for first reading with reservation, motion approved.
And whereas the City Mayor has approved the conduct of the same subject to submission of post-activity report and compliance with other conditions and instruction, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, honorable and honorificated Secretary is passing this resolution on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approvation number six, a resolution approving the conduct of the first quarter scientific seminar and joint or other induction ceremonies on 31st August 2023 by the Philippine Dental Association of San Osami Saktan in San Osami City. Again, I yield to Chairman of the Committee on Health and Salvation and the Board of Captain Lynn to endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Captain Lynn, you are now recognized, would that chair for the appropriate motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the first quarter scientific seminar and joint turnover and induction ceremonies on 31st August 2023 by the Philippine Dental Association Osami's chapter in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its urgency, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, a resolution approving the conduct of the first quarter scientific seminar and joint turnover and induction ceremonies on 31st August 2023 by the Philippine Dental Association Osami's chapter in Osami City, waiving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, the honorable Captain Lynn is passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approvation number seven, association across and local cities to enter into contact for the concreting of Sangaydako Tumalibangkaw Road located at Barangay Sangaydako, Osami City and perform all acts for implementation of the project funded from construction and rehabilitation or widening of local barangay roads bridges, spillways, and drainage system road networks of 20% development fund. I now yield to the Chairman of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, honorable Salo Salvador, to endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Salo Salvador, you are now recognized, would that chair for the appropriate motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of barangay Sangaydako Tumalibangkaw Road located at barangay Sangaydako, Osami City and perform all acts for implementation of the project funded from the construction and or rehabilitation or widening of local barangay roads, bridges, spillways, and drainage systems, road networks of the 20% development fund. I move to pass this resolution for the first reading with reservation.
More for the first reading with reservation, motion approved.
And for the interest of public service, I would like to, I would like to pass this resolution for the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter a contract for the concreting of Sangaydako Tumalibangkaw Road located at barangay Sangaydako, Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction and or rehabilitation or widening of the local barangay roads, bridges, spillways, and drainage systems of the 20% development fund for the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules, Madam Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request and for the interests of the public, the honorable Salo Salvador is passing this resolution as being presented, to pass this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approvation number eight, a resolution authorizing the local executive to implement the construction of a temporary school building at Mintala Elementary School located at barangay Sangaydak, Osami City and perform all acts for implementation of the project funded from the construction of school building and other facilities of the Special Education Fund. I again yield to Chairman of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, honorable Salo Salvador, to again endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Salo Salvador, you are now recognized, would that chair for the appropriate motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to implement the construction of a temporary school building at Mintala Elementary School located at barangay Sangaydak, Osami City and perform any and all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction of school buildings and other facilities of the Special Education Fund. I move to pass this for the first reading with reservation.
More for first reading with reservation, motion approved.
For the interest of public service, Madam Chair, I would like to pass this resolution on the second and final reading, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to implement the construction of a temporary school building at Mintala Elementary School located at barangay Sangaydak, Osami City and perform any and all acts for the implementation of the project funded from construction of school buildings and other facilities of the Special Education Fund. I move this for the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request and for public interest, the honorable Salvo Salvador is passing this resolution as being presented, passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approvation number nine, a resolution authorizing the local executive to enter into contact with the completion of barangay market located at Barangay Balintawak, Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded for the construction and repair improvement of multi-purpose halls, buildings, daycare centers, and other structures in different barangays of 20% development fund. Again, I yield to honorable Salo Salvador to endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Salo Salvador, you are now recognized, would that chair for the appropriate motion?
Thank you again, Madam Chair and Mr. Majority Floor Leader. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter a contract for the completion of barangay market located at Moro Quatro, barangay Balintawak, Osami City and perform any and all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction, repair, improvement of multi-purpose halls, buildings, daycare centers, and other structures in different barangays of the 20% development fund. I move this for the first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
More for first reading with reservation, motion approved.
For the urgency of this matter, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution on second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request and for public interest, the honorable Salvo Salvador is passing this resolution as being presented on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The last, but the latest approvation number ten, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into contact for the concreting of Gotokanjut barangay road located at barangay Gotokanjut, Osami City and perform all acts for implementation of the project funded from the construction and or rehabilitation and widening of local barangay roads bridges, drainage system of 20% development fund. Again, I yield to honorable Salo Salvador, Chairman of the Committee on Public Works, to endorse and take action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The honorable Salvo Salvador is recognized, would that chair for the appropriate motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of Gotokanjut barangay road located at barangay Gotokanjut, Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from construction and or rehabilitation or widening of the local barangay roads and bridges, spillways, and drainage system of the 20% development fund for the first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
More for it, more for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
For the interest of the public service, I would like to pass this resolution on the second final reading, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of Gotokanjut barangay road located at barangay Gotokanjut, Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction and or rehabilitation and or widening of local barangay roads, bridges, spillways, and drainage system of the 20% development fund. I move this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request and for the public interest, the honorable Salvo Salvador is passing this on the second and final reading, waiving the internal rules as being presented. Is there any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved, or the second and final reading?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no reading items on my table, under item number ten, business would be reading, so as a juncture, may we have the police and official 12% matters upon honorable decisions, Honorable Chair?
The honorable Siso is now recognized, would that chair for some PCL matters?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is in line with our upcoming PCL activity, Madam Chair, this coming October 3 to 5 at Cebu City, October 3 and 5 at Cebu City. This is the continuing legal education for counselors from the PCL Neo officers and we are invited to attend at Cebu City this coming October 3 and 5. An other update regarding the local legislative awards, Madam Chair, respect to our upcoming September 7 evaluation, we will be competing together with Oraqueta and Tango City and evaluators will be with us this coming September 7, the whole day, and probably they will going to check our ordinances, resolutions, our legal tracking system, including also the journals, the minutes, as well as our budgets for calendar years 2019, 2020, 2021. And also, Madam Chair, they will also be checking all our offices, if we have legislative staff, if we have filing cabinet, if we have independent offices, this is part of their evaluation. And also, on that day, they will also be asking questions regarding sponsor dissolutions and ordinances to all counselors depending on the subject matters that will be part. And the secretariat is already into working the preparations of all the documents needed and I am, I'll be calling another meeting September 1 to check if all documents are ready and then we will be having a dry run on September 5, a on-site evaluation, September 5, so that we will be ready and prepared on the September 7 event. And hopefully, we could be all present on that day because, uh, no, on the, the day, September 7. Yeah, on the dry run also, if possible, so that we already have the idea of what will be happening on September 7. What time? 9:30, they will be around, they will have their lunch and in the afternoon, you will have the third and fourth part of the evaluation.
On the dry run on September 5, is that at 9:30?
Uh, if, that would be scheduled if we have available time, we don't have any committee hearings or any other schedule, I suggest that it will be in the morning.
What day is that, September 5?
Tuesday, September 5.
Or the 2nd after the session?
9:30, September?
Well, on September 4, after the session.
September 4?
Because September 4 is first Monday, September 5, we don't have any session.
Okay, so we'll have it after the session.
Okay.
Uh, September 4 is the first Monday?
Yes.
So we'll be having our session in the morning, in the dry run?
Oh, and after the session on September 4?
After the session, okay, that would be fine. So I hope everybody will be around, of course, because that would be our first session. And should you have anything to share or for some any comments or remarks, whatever, that we can be always be prepared during the evaluation on September 7?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Siso. I hope you have made the necessary coordination with our secretary.
We did already yesterday, Madam Chair.
Thank you, not even a cheer.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, thank you, Honorable Siso. At this point in time, may we now have the privilege and special to hear all matters from honorable Evin Acebelio, Honorable Chair?
Honorable Evin Acebelio, you are now recognized, would that chair?
Uh, non-fullest day, Madam Chair, thank you.
Kina na kamo, madam.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. May we also have the privilege and special to hear all matters concerning the indigenous people from honorable Bailelin Babatyon, Honorable Chair?
Honorable Bailelin Babatyon, you are now recognized, would that chair? For now, Madam Chair, non-fullest day.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, before I proceed to the last item, I just received a call from the Office City Mayor, the mayor asked that the awarding of the housing units is adjourned, is moved from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock, Honorable Chair, though, uh, perhaps the mayor will be coming, I am thinking that he will, I think he will be coming, is adjourned, session hall.
Session hall, over there.
We'll be going to Malaubang for the ribbon cutting, you know, and integration of the new, newly finished housing units, allowing to give the beneficiaries of the urban for iteration in San Osami, Honorable Chair?
So, that would be then here inside the session hall?
Here, 4 o'clock, session hall. Uh, perhaps Honorable Siso could add certain details about that, Honorable Chair?
Okay, may we hear from Honorable Siso for some details?
Uh, any other update? Uh, yesterday, the mayor told us that the venue and the date will still be tentative. I think the honorable Salo has already had the date scheduled for the 3 o'clock because we were informed it's 3, but it was moved to 4.
Yes.
May we ask the honorable Salo, Madam Chair, on the latest update on the venue as well as on the blessings?
May we hear from Honorable Salo on the latest update?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, actually, uh, the secretary, the mayor told me this morning regarding sa, uh, turnover, there is a session hall at 4:00 PM, uh, from 3:00 PM moved to 4:00 PM. Uh, at the same time, after the, the turnover ceremonies, there is a session hall, proceed ta sa, sa on-site dito sa Urban for Malaubang para sa, uh, cutting and blessing sa mga units sa housing.
Okay, so at 4 o'clock?
Ceremonial turnover, there is a session hall.
4:00 PM?
After the ceremonial turnover, uh, na, naiparin na nag-ready dito sa site for the blessings sa housing unit then, uh, ribbon cutting.
After, yeah, uh, 4 o'clock, 4 o'clock, this afternoon?
Uh, 4 o'clock, this afternoon, there is a session hall.
Yeah.
Ceremonial turnover sa mga beneficiary.
Yeah, after which, we have to proceed to?
After the ceremonial turnover, proceed to the site at the 4 o'clock, Dos barangay Malaubang, Urban for Housing Unit.
Noted, honorable, uh, is there any comment?
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
So we have to stay put? It's to 30, uh, it's to 20?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
4 o'clock?
Related to the public mall, perhaps it would be appropriate, uh, if the members of society will receive information about this and I request Honorable Siso to, to inform this body about the awarding of stores we had this, uh, morning. Uh, we ordered, I yield to our Chairman of the Executive Committee of the National Board, Honorable Siso, Honorable Siso, Honorable Siso, Honorable Chair?
Yes, we would like to recognize Honorable Co. for some updates on the awarding of the stores, stalls, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, this august body. So this morning, we had our, um, we conducted the ceremony on, um, awarding, giving out the notices of award to the applicants at the public mall, so they can engage in business inside the public mall. So, uh, we had distributed 31 applicants for approval of their, um, application and right after, we immediately executed, um, the signing of the contract of lease, so that they can already proceed with applying a business permit to conduct legally or open legally, um, a business inside the public mall. And we also notified them of their, um, of their, um, business permit processing that would be due on the August 31, so they need to process everything so that they can continue to operate inside the public mall. So that would be on, the last day of filing of their business permit would be on August 31. And the notice of the vacancies, uh, at the public mall ended today, so after that, we would again be, be scheduling a next batch of screening and interview for the new applicants.
Okay, how many are the new applicants and the old?
Um, the, the 31 applicants that were given the contract this morning were already early application or already an old applicants, uh, with, previously with lacking documents, so they have already completed it now and that they were already awarded the contract of lease. So we are still looking forward to maybe around 100 plus more applicants since we posted 200, uh, something like, um, vacancies at the public mall, only at the public mall. And at the wellness park, there are about two stalls, bacon stalls, uh, posted as bacon, uh, stalls posted as bacon.
Okay, so 31 ang old applicants?
Uh, yes, old applicants, uh, uh.
Then you overwanna do?
Huh?
Overwanna the applicants for the new?
Uh, for the new applicants, though, we, we are expecting around 100 or so because the total vacancies, uh, uh, is siguro 200 plus. I'm not pretty sure the, of the exact, uh, excess of the 200.
Okay, thank you for that information, Honorable Co. If there is any query or whatever, comment, remarks, there's any, may I have my mga pangotana, just in case?
What we awarded this morning, called the, previously 50, 50 stakeholders, uh, why you for renewal, Honorable Chair, out of 50, 31 were awarded this morning, about six were absent during the interview as required by our ordinance and about 7 applicants were not endorsed by the, by the captains, which there's a requirement in our ordinance, aside from the, by the clearance and the post clearance, this is also a requirement of the endorsement by captain, but three shoulders, three, yet were not endorsed by the, uh, by captains, by captain, uh, of Tinago, two from Baniliro and two from Barikatama, Malabay, Honorable Janador. So pituang wala may nos kapitan, unang absent, 31 award, pituang wala ma award, total in all 50, 50 shoulders. Thirty-one award, pitong wala ma award, total in all fifty, fifty holders. But the next bus will be due again for interview of the, she do to be determined by the chairman drafts, the committee and honorable Sisil Yoko. After submission of the application with the completion of the requirements being, uh, mandated by ordinance, Honorable Chair.
Okay. I hope everything would be in order. No more, no more bull bull.
If there are no more, uh, other information or inquiries from my colleagues and any other relevant under information, which my colleagues, we wish to bring forth, Honorable Chair. I now will be inclined to proceed to the last part. I will await for the four o'clock season for the seminar to over the housing units by the, the G O to.
Four o'clock will be here.
Uh, be processed at Malaubang, Honorable Chair. Many time.
Four o'clock, four o'clock niya patagadin.
Hmm, dita. I move to adjourn the reservation, Honorable Chair.
Session is adjourned. Please be reminded that the four o'clock is still be around, then we be proceeding to the meeting.